Well, good morning, everybody. We'll call the work session today, October 15th at 10:00 a.m. We'll go ahead and start off with Superintendent Connor, please, with some opening remarks.
Thank you. So I just wanted to take a moment. As you know, we are getting back to normalcy as a result of Hurricane Milton. First, just want to recognize that, you know, it's been a challenging couple of weeks. And then on top of Helene, you know, it's been a lot for everybody personally, professionally. But I got to tell you, I just want to take a moment to really recognize the outstanding individuals in our staff who really ran 17 shelters over the course of the hurricane. And if you don't know, there's a lot that goes into running a hurricane. Within those 17 shelters, we hosted over 10,000 guests. And the positive reports that I received personally as a result of that, of how our staff treated our guests and accommodated them was such a, was very inspiring. And I just want to first just say thank you to the staff who were able to do this. Our core mission is education. That's what we signed up to do. I don't think, anytime we decided to be a teacher, an educator, an administrator, that we thought we'd be running shelters. But they stood in the gap and for this community, and we will continue to do that. And we'll do that with graciousness and compassion, and we're thankful for that. Over 10,000 people were hosted. We had over 1,600 pets in our shelters. So you can imagine, there might have been a little funkiness going on in some of our rooms. You put 1,600 pets in a room, or even 100 in a classroom, or whatever, you're going to have some smells. But that included snakes, that included iguanas, that included birds. You know, we love our pets, right? We served over 38,000 meals over the course of that time. So hats off to our Food Nutrition Services, who, again, you don't really think about what all goes into running a shelter, but it comes to food, it comes to maintenance and facilities, it comes, you know, security, safety and security, the admin teams who are on the clock 24 hours a day over the course of that. We also hosted over 1,000 emergency responders, local police, FEMA, fire and rescue, and their families over the course of that. And we're so thankful for the work that they were able to get out and do their search and rescue missions and get us back on our feet. So just want to first just say thank you to everyone who was involved in that, and thank you to our community. I hope we represented well for Sarasota County. And with that, I will hand it back over to you, sir.
Yeah, and I'd also, I know, I've lived here for 45 years, you know, also I know that there's a lot of people still that don't have power, and a lot of staff have got damaged, and a lot of the parents are also, you know, and I know that this is a really, really terrible time for a lot of people. I mean, just as you drive around after it, you can see so many people's lives have been changed, especially on our barrier islands have been just absolutely, you know, when you see somebody when they're, you know, between the roofline and their window is like two feet, and the sand is full in there, which I saw pictures down in Venice, it's really unfathomable about the strength of the storm that came through here and with the staff and everybody I know to get back. Thanks to your leadership and being able to get our teachers back today, to be able to start preparing for our kids. You know, I know that routines are very, very important, and, you know, I'm very appreciative of all of our staff and everybody who worked the shelters. And I've heard nothing but exemplary stories and remarks of how everything was handled through there. So with that, any board member have any comments reference to that before we get outside of it? Okay. If we go back over to Mr. Connor, reference to our first agenda item?
All right. So I have the pleasure of sharing an update with the board and community. We have been working, ever since this board approved the allocations for our new multilingual support department, we've been hard at work at filling those positions, getting the right people in place, and standing up this division so that it can really take off and accomplish the goals that we've all, as a board, have talked about over the last couple of months around how we support students who speak other languages other than their primary language being English, right? And so I'm very proud to share with you where we're headed in that direction. So we have our Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Rachel O'Day, here. We have Kristi D'Souza, Kristi D'Souza from our Director of Strategic Improvement and Multilingual Learning, and our Supervisor of ESOL, Ms. Megan Parento, who will be joining to share an update today regarding our multilingual support.
Yes, so as Superintendent Connor said, this, this part of the presentation's really focused on the multilingual learning part of that division. You heard the word strategic improvement in there as well. That is a component that does tie nicely into this, but a little bit separate, that we can update at a different time. But we're very much going to focus on multilingual learning. Very proud of the team sitting to my left of all the work they've done to get this department off the ground and start forging forward, in addition to the team that's sitting behind me, of awesome program specialists that do many, many things to support schools and teachers. So without further ado, I'd like to turn over to Ms. D'Souza.
Thank you for that introduction. Good morning, Superintendent Connor, and Ms. O'Day, and members of the board. I'm honored to be here, along with Megan, to provide you with an overview of our multilingual learning program. So in today's work session, we would like to take you on a journey of who we are, the students that we support, and what we will do to achieve our goals. So to begin with who we are as a multilingual learning department, thanks to the shared vision and support of Superintendent Connor and the members of this board, we now have this restructured, expanded, and fully-staffed department of federal programs and multilingual learning staff, allowing us to move away from a heavily compliance-based orientation to a focus on providing enhanced levels of support to our diverse student populations, thank you, their families, and the educators that work with them. You'll notice on this slide and in our conversations today, the use of different terms from what seems to be the same thing, multilingual learner, ESOL, ELL, right? So there is a rationale behind our choice of word in different contexts. Multilingual learner is the name of our department. It is also about the process involved in teaching students who use more than one language. ESOL, or English for Speakers of Other Languages, refers to the program itself, or the educators in the program, so ESOL teachers, ESOL program specialists, et cetera. And English Language Learners, or Ls, refers to the students themselves, or the learners. On the left side and far right side of this org chart, we have our federal programs and grant staff, who focus on strategic resourcing for improvement efforts. In the middle of the bottom rung, and the focus of our conversation today, are the district-level multilingual learning support positions, including the ESOL supervisor, who's responsible for actively participating in and monitoring compliance with Title III and ESOL program implementation in accordance with governing regulations, but also for facilitating continuous improvement of classroom instruction for Ls. The implementation specialist is responsible for ensuring we meet the intents and purposes and carry out the designed activities and various grants that fund our ESOL initiatives. The ESOL program specialists support the district's ESOL program initiatives by designing and delivering professional learning, providing job and vetting coaching and support to teachers, and collaborating with administrators for successful program implementation in schools. The ELL parent outreach facilitator is responsible for cultivating the district's ESOL parent and family engagement strategy, with ultimate goal of engaging ELL families as essential partners in their child's education. So with this robust team of dedicated individuals, we'll be able to move beyond focusing solely on compliance to putting in place best practices for improved student outcomes. And I would like to acknowledge these team members and the audience behind us today. They're the folks behind the scenes and out in the field, supporting the work every day. They have incredible experience, passion, and drive, and I'm truly delighted with the team we've been able to form, again, thanks to the support of the superintendent and this board.
And as a reminder, board, this was not something that hit our general fund hard. We did a lot of reprioritizing funds as we redid our staffing allocations, removed ESAR grant, and reallocated and reprioritized our funds to make sure we had the opportunity to bring this together. So the only position that did hit our general fund was our competitive grant specialist, who has already paid for herself in a month with the amount of grants that she's bringing to the table that we're sending across Superintendent Connor's desk. And you'll be seeing shortly in upcoming board meetings to fund different underfunded initiatives or programs that we would like to do in this district. So we're excited about that. And then our ESOL supervisor was already funded. We just reallocated funds within our Stronger Connections Grant to make some changes there. So just as a reminder, this is all fundraising and reprioritizing of funds, making this even more exciting that we can bring this to the table in mostly a cost-neutral manner. So we know that when the need is great... Is that better? Oh, there we go. I don't need to be louder. We know that when the need is great, the support needs to be even greater. And in addition to the district-level positions that we just outlined on the org chart, we also have multiple other layers of support within the ESOL program. Those support really fall into the four buckets you see up on the screen. We have our program specialists, who are district-level employees, who really start the transfer of knowledge from the district level to the school. They really deliver professional learning and are the experts in leveraging high-impact strategies to teachers and liaisons in schools. Our ESOL liaisons are school-based, and they do have a priority to maintain our compliance with state and federal regulations, and we are working to increase their capacity to really be instructional leaders in their building as well, again, moving away from that compliance piece, and into that being a coach and a mentor in the, in the school. Our teachers are the daily boots-on-the-ground support, we know that, and we know that all teachers in Sarasota County schools are ESOL teachers. They ensure our students receive high-quality Tier One instruction, because we know our ELL students are Gen Ed students first. And of course, our ESOL paraprofessionals provide supplemental small-group support, focused on language acquisition and content knowledge, to ensure that our students can be successful in all of their core content areas.
Okay, so now that we've been oriented to the team and who we support, we'd like to talk about the students. So this data represents the multilingual learner population in Sarasota County schools as of September 13th of this year. Active students are those currently receiving ESOL services, and they're labeled as LY. Monitored students are those who have exited the ESOL program by demonstrating achieving English language proficiency. Long-term LY students are those in program and receiving services for more than six years. It's a goal to decrease this number, as we will discuss a little farther into this presentation. Immigrant students are not born in the United States District of Columbia or Puerto Rico, and have not been attending school in the U.S. for more than three full academic years. Over half of our total EL student population are born in the United States. Multilingual learners make up 12% of our student population, speaking 56 languages and representing 77 different countries. As you can see, we serve a wide array of students with various backgrounds, languages, and cultures who are, who we are proud to serve. Here we have a more visual representation of the 77 countries comprising our student population, to really highlight the diversity we have in our program. Blue being the largest, with 100-plus students, green in the mid-range, with between 10 to 99, and orange with the fewest students, less than 10, coming from those countries. Sarasota is somewhat unique in having a large Eastern European population of our Russian and Ukrainian families. So you can see we represent a truly inclusive global society. Here's another representation of our student population, the predominant languages spoken, and the countries of origin. So please take a few moments to orient yourself to and absorb this data. The left circular graphic organizer represents spoken languages. The table to the right shows the top five countries of origin and the number of students coming from each. Not surprisingly, Spanish is the highest percentage, with the most students coming specifically from Cuba, followed by Venezuela, then Mexico. Russia and Ukrainian have the next highest population of ELL students, followed by Brazilian, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole.
So we've discussed the profile of our ELL students, but we want to make you aware of the breakdown within our ELL student population. Students are assessed every spring on the WIDA Access Assessment, which assesses students' level of English language proficiency. Students can score anywhere between a 1 and a 6 on this assessment. LYA, I want to start on the first one. So LYA is limited English proficiency, and as you can see, the higher a student scores on those levels, the more proficient they are with the English language. I do want to point out that students who enter our schools can fall anywhere on the continuum. Just because they come to us as a first-year student or a first-time student with us does not mean they are in LYA. And they're assessed when, when they enter the school within the first 10 days. We've also broken the data down further for you, so you can see our amount of students that are classified as LYA, LYB, and LYC by grade band, so in our elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. All students entering a district school fill out the home language survey upon registration and answer the three questions on the survey. I am very proud to tell you that the survey is currently available in many languages, including, get ready, Spanish, Haitian Creole, Russian, Ukrainian, Portuguese, French, and Vietnamese, and more are coming. If any question is marked yes by the parents when they're registering, the school-based ESOL liaison completes the WIDA screener within the first 10 school days. If a student is found eligible for ESOL services, meaning they scored below a 4 on that graph I just showed you, they receive an LY code, meaning they are an active ESOL student. As students progress through the ESOL program and exit from current LY status, their coding changes, and you can see the current number of students in each phase of our ESOL program under the codings. This is the process that we follow to exit students from an ESOL program. I do want to make you aware, this is not a district-based decision, but this is rooted in state policy. All ELL students in K through 12 must score at least a 4.0 on the WIDA Access Assessment. You can see the criteria to exit the program increases in complexity as our students move through the grade levels. For all students, once they exit, they're monitored for an additional two years after exiting LY status, to ensure they're progressing through the grade-level benchmarks with their non-ELL peers. In grades 3 through 9, in addition to scoring above a 4 on WIDA, they must also score above a 3 on the ELA FAST. And in grades 10 through 12, that's a passing score on the 10th grade ELA assessment as well. All students in grades K through 12 can also be exited via an ELL committee decision. The decision is made in collaboration with the student's teachers, parents, ESOL liaison, and any other stakeholders for that student. We're going to look at some of our current performance data now as well in ELA and math, and a little bit about each school's ELL population. This is a historical look at our ELA performance data only for our active LY students. The trend is very typical in ELA, because we know what a lift it is, really when you're acquiring a new language and trying to read and comprehend and answer high, complex questions in a language you're unfamiliar with. So this trend is very typical that we see because of the language barrier and the content knowledge gap. As you can see, our proficiency has stayed pretty consistent, and proficiency can only be made by students who've been enrolled in school for more than two years. We're continuing to drill down into the students' data to compare FAST scores with their WIDA or English language proficiency scores, to determine if it's a content gap or a language barrier, so we can really prescribe instructional next steps for each student. Gains can only be made by students enrolled for more than one year with a previous year's FAST score, and we really like to celebrate these gains from our students, because they're typically still in students who are coded LYA and LYB. We're going to look at our historical math data next. The same criteria exists for students eligible for proficient and gains, in regards to how many years they've been enrolled in a U.S. school. I want to point out that we do typically see much higher numbers in math compared to ELA, again, because of that heavy lift in reading comprehension, and we know that numbers truly are a universal language. This data and the difference between the ELA and the math data really outlines the fact that our ELL students are incredibly capable of these complex tasks and benchmarks when we remove the language barrier from them. Here is a brief look at all of our elementary schools and the percent of their student population that is an active LY student, that shows how widespread our ELL population is across the district. Tuttle is our highest elementary school, with over 46% of their student population being active LY and receiving ESOL services. Venice Elementary is our lowest, with 4.3%. And here's a look at our middle and high schools. Again, you can see the locations with the higher percentages spread throughout the district. In middle school, Booker Middle and Brookside have 16% of their total student population in the ESOL program. And in high school, our largest population is at Booker High, with 13%. Venice High has the lowest population of ESOL students in the district, with 1% of their population being an active ESOL student. Now that we've reviewed with you how we enter students into the program, exit students into the program, what those demographics look like across our district and in our schools, we're going to share with you what those design supports are going to look like. The team behind me, the team next to me, and not only the team that's associated with multilingual learning, but also our level chiefs and everyone that is working with students have defined goals and aligned that to strategic actions. What you're going to find is that there's a theme that's connected to our strategic plan. We're looking at three goals that really do mirror that theme. You have improving performance of that student group. You have ensuring that we're increasing capacity of the staff working with the student group, and empowering and engaging those families. Working those three goals interchangeably is what is going to allow for advancement and support of that student population, and removing those language barriers so they can be highly successful in a shorter amount of time. All right, we're going to jump right into Goal One, improving the academic performance of our ELL students. You'll see each goal that we go through has two objectives, so we'll go ahead and get started. Objective one is to improve the academic performance of ELL students, increase the percent of them achieving proficiency in ELA and math by 3% on FAST. It doesn't sound like a very large number, but when we dig into the data and we see where we currently are, it is going to be quite the lift, but we've got a lot of strategies to ensure that we get there. Objective two, increase the percent of students making progress in achieving English language proficiency on WIDA. We know as our students increase their English language proficiency, we should see our FAST scores increase as well. Yes, and you'll see that typically in our presentations, when we talk about our progress monitoring assessments, or we're sharing strategic plan updates, we're really looking at our state assessments. This assessment is drawn out for this student group particularly, because it focuses on where they are as far as language acquisition and proficiency, but then it really does drive the instructional approach for these students. Knowing exactly what those barriers are and where those gaps are, and how our ESOL liaisons and program specialists and classroom teachers can fold that into Tier One instruction and provide tiered supports, that data point is really heavily used to drive instruction, although they are general education students first, so they do take that state assessment, but that's very heavily focused on Florida standards, and this other assessment's focused on language acquisition, so we have to put those together when we're looking at advancing Goal one, again, is to improve the academic performance of our ELL students. You can see on the left side of the screen is how we're going to measure our success of meeting our goal, as well as how this goal aligns directly to the superintendent's strategic plan. When we look at how we're going to improve academic performance, we really look at the instruction happening in classrooms every day, and how we're monitoring the instruction that's happening in classrooms every day. We've created a monitoring tool that all schools will use to streamline their data collection, align to benchmarks, and the decision tree mentioned in the comprehensive evidence-based reading plan. This tool is going to allow schools to triangulate data and make instructional next steps for each student on their campus, to ensure equitable access to daily, high-quality Tier One instruction, along with supplemental resources in small groups. One highlight is the new use of Elevation this year. We're very excited. We are piloting Elevation with just our ESOL liaisons at the school level, really to allow them to get comfortable and then lead that work the following year with our ESOL teachers and paraprofessionals. This platform utilizes real-time student data dashboard, combined with tailored professional learning based on the student data dashboard, to ensure a robust system of support for our ESOL students. Goal two, increase the instructional capacity of liaisons, teachers, and ESOL paraprofessionals. Again, our two objectives. Objective one is to develop the ESOL liaison cadre. You're very familiar with the framework, with reading coaches and data coaches, I know you've, you've heard about it before. We'll be having monthly meetings focusing on coaching techniques, data analysis, and aligning instructional best practices to meet student needs. Objective two is to create and facilitate monthly professional learning offerings for employees who impact student learning. And again, this is all to increase the capacity of the staff who work with our ELL students every day. Again, you can see how we're going to measure our success on meeting our goals, along with the alignment to the strategic plan. This goal is focused on high-quality professional learning, which we know is a critical, critical part of any educator continuing to be impactful in the classroom and for their students. This type of professional learning requires time, personnel, planning, funding, and we're excited that we're able to coordinate multiple grants and funding sources to offer monthly professional learning that resulted in a cost-neutral impact on the district. A few grants we're utilizing are Title III, which is our annual entitlement funding source, the Drip Grant, which funds intensive reading programs specifically for ELL students. And this year, we were awarded an additional grant that focuses solely on professional learning to increase the academic performance of ELL students. Again, we're proud that all of these monthly optional professional learning for teachers, administrators, liaisons, paras are at no cost to the district. And Goal Three, increase parent, family, and community support. We know how critical this goal is, because parents and caregivers are our students' first teacher, and including them in their educational process of their child reaps academic benefits for years to follow. Objective one is to develop a system of support for all schools to effectively communicate and engage with families of multilingual learners. And objective two is to increase the number of community agencies that support the multilingual students and their families of this district. You can see how we will measure our success toward achieving the goal, under our key metrics, and again, our alignment to the superintendent's strategic plan. This goal focuses on creating a safe space for multilingual families to be an active participant in their child's education. We've utilized our Stronger Connections Grant to support this work in a few ways I want to point out. We're developing family resource bags filled with language-rich games to support oral language development at home in fun and engaging ways. These bags will be given to parents as they register their students at schools. We've contracted a second family outreach facilitator to focus in South County, who's fluent in Ukrainian and/or Russian, to really meet the needs of that population we're seeing in our South County area. And we're collaborating with the communications team to develop videos in multiple languages to help families navigate the school system. And we're in the process of ordering multilingual signs for all of our common areas and all of our schools to really create a welcoming environment for our students and our families when they enter. We are also piloting Language Live devices, which, if you guys have not seen, they're really great, and we probably should have brought one in just to show you guys, in our Title I schools this year. These devices look like two iPads that set up together, and you use them when you walk into a school's front office. They instantly translate verbal communication into any language that the parent has spoken. Our families can now walk right into the office, utilize this device, and effectively communicate orally and in written captions with office staff, teachers, administrators, in real time, regardless of the language barrier. It's our goal to find a funding source to have these devices in all schools next year. Ms. D'Souza can tell you, I talked about it during Hurricane Shelter duty, I was like, "We need this here right now." It would have been great. So we're really looking at ways that we can fund those for all of our sites next year. This year, again, they are only in our Title I schools. But they, they truly are breaking down barriers in communicating with our non-English-speaking families, so we're excited to use them. And lastly, just to sum it up, we know that combined these three goals, we will achieve student success. And our department vision is that all of our ELL students have access to not only high-quality Tier One instruction with their peers, but supplemental resources to be successful as well. Regardless of what language they speak when they arrive to us, regardless of their level of English proficiency, regardless of their content knowledge gaps. We look at what strengths our students bring to us, including their heritage language and their family culture, including their family and the child's educational journey. Doing so is essential for fostering an inclusive and supportive learning environment, and recognizing their unique, unique strengths not only boosts their confidence in self-belonging, but also enriches the classroom experience for all students. Because as we said before, before they're ELL students, they're Gen Ed students.
Okay, that concludes our presentation. Superintendent Connor and board, we'll take questions if you have any at this time.
Ms. Marinelli?
I have a few questions and observations, so bear with me as I go through my pages of where I took my notes. I think that going the shift from compliance to the educational outcomes is very, very important, even though compliance is extremely important, especially if anybody has gone through an audit, when they come down, that is a very time-consuming and stressful time. So I know compliance, but really focusing on the educational, but I think it's not just a language barrier, and you kind of touched on it, it's the cultural differences that they come with and the customs. Because when I was a school counselor at Southside is when the Vietnamese came, and getting called into the cafeteria and having children crying, because they didn't know how to use the utensils. We hadn't been given any kind of training on that, and that has stuck with me for all these years, that that's an important thing too, when we know that children are really coming from different countries, what that, what they're used to, and then plop, they're put in a school cafeteria or that whole environment, and just need to have that awareness. So I'm glad to see that you're doing that, and then helping the parents. So here's my first question, does... Does, and forgive me, I don't remember this, but does every school have a specific ESOL liaison? Or is it combined? Like, the counselors used to have that as a duty? Or do we have somebody specific now that does that?
Every school does have an ESOL liaison, and some schools have different allocations based on their population. But there is a designated ESOL liaison that does oversee the role, the role-specific duties aligned to serving that population. Now, there may be vacancies. Not a ton, but there may be vacancies, but there isn't a specific allocation.
Okay, I just want to, because everything in the academic realm has been upped, and with that comes responsibility. So I just want to make sure that we have the people in place, and that it's not an added duty to somebody who already has their own job description and duties to do. So, okay. I think that the map that you showed was very, very interesting of, because I'm visual too, and that, when you look at the Russian, Ukrainian, it's... And I think it's good to always let the community know what is state criteria, and not that all of us are making these decisions, that we follow state criteria. So that doesn't mean we always agree with it, but we have to follow it. So... But I'm very, very pleased with what you have presented, and how you've aligned the staff, and of course, having the parent outreach person that's here now, part of the district, and the grants. And I did like, when you're talking about the welcoming environment, especially having the signs, I think that'll make a big difference. And just going around to the schools, especially like that first week of school, having those devices will really help the registrars, because that is the first point of contact. And when you have that language barrier, that I think would be very helpful to them and the parents as they're trying to figure out how to register their children. So anyway, I like what you've presented, and I like the focus in how departments are going to be working together instead of in isolation, and these are Gen Ed Kids First. So thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Sigler?
Okay, I'm very excited. If you couldn't see all the notes I was taking. So this is a great presentation, and I really appreciate the focus of this. I think that, as has been stated before, this has been an area that's been sadly underserved and under-strategized. And I think it breaks our heart for all of those students, because as you noted, they have full capability of succeeding. As someone who had moved schools in high school and spoke the language, it was terrifying. I can't even imagine that feeling of a student every single day in addition to the parents. So so many things that you outlined, just for the sake of time, I won't go nip at it, but my page is full. One thing, a couple of things I wanted to ask about, can you go back to the timeline? When we, so they come in, the LY, I think I have this right, the LYA, and then when they are considered long-term, can you walk me through that? Because I'm not fully sure.
Sure, so depending on their level of English language acquisition, that's how they move from that LYA, LYB, LYC status, depending on how comfortable they are with the English language. What was the second part of your question?
No, that...
Oh, long-term. So our long-term ELL students are students who have been in the program active for more than six years. So if you were able to look down into the strategies and some of our goals a little bit further, that is one of our goals, is to decrease the number of long-term ELL students. Research shows if after six years they haven't acquired a second language, there might be a second barrier that we aren't addressing yet. So really looking at those, I think it's 108 right now, students that are considered long-term ELLs, and really digging into their level of English language proficiency. Is that where our barrier still is? Is it a content gap, content knowledge gap? Could it be something else? And really making sure that we're addressing them with the needs that they need specifically, and not just keeping an ELL label on them for the sake of keeping the label on them.
Got, good point.
Additionally, if at that point, you may be looking at a student with disability, but you know, we have to work through language barriers first to make sure we're not wrongfully identifying students because they don't know the language. That does happen, where we don't realize the level of capability there because there's a language barrier. So working through the process, and sometimes we might have that label a little longer than we should, and that it's not appropriate, so that's more so a little bit deeper into what Ms. Prento was referring to.
Good point. So then moving to staffing, because I love the percentage part when we look at the district, and then going to PD, because it's such a priority, and I'm very excited about that, but there's only so many hours in a day. What is that, so is it equal across the board? I mean, when we look at some of our schools that have a higher percentage, you're going to have a lot of other staff who are not specified as ESOL, paras, et cetera, that are interfacing with these students. What does that look like? How do we work through that?
So we have done a lot to have this cross-divisional collaboration between elementary, middle, and high, and the Division of Multilingual Learning. We also have staff in the Curriculum Instruction Division that is assigned to that division, not necessarily Multilingual Learning Division. There's a lot of cross-collaboration when it comes to designing tier-one instruction in tiered scaffolds, not only for multilingual, but for our students with disabilities, which we shared a lot during that Comprehensive Reading Plan discussion and the Student Progression Plan discussion. So that professional learning is always going to start with hitting the majority, and then we're going to talk about tiered supports. And depending on, as a teacher, what populations you're assigned or working with heavily, you can then either use our resources to determine those tiered supports, or you can select trainings that are more appropriate to that population. So we are kind of this one big ball of wax, and we're working together to make sure that it makes sense for the person that is experiencing everybody. Right? Typically in elementary, you have all of, you know, it's not as, it's different in secondary the way we schedule versus elementary. So our elementary teacher definitely has to have that tool belt on, that they're constantly taking out, revising, refining based on students' response to data, but then also those tiered supports that make sense for when we're having a language issue versus a specialized disability. So it's very complex. And the professional learning side of it, because there isn't a lot of time, a lot of it is voluntary, right? There isn't really a, "You must do this." It's voluntary, it's highly encouraged. We believe that that professional learning just makes you more successful and more prepared in what you're doing. Additionally, that cadre work that we talk about for all of those resource teachers, whether it's a literacy coach, a data coach, whoever is not assigned to a classroom, they're working with each part of the Division in Curriculum Instruction and Multilingual Learning and Students with Disabilities to make sure that they're getting that training to also bring back to the school and support staff. Because there isn't time, so you have to just make it job embedded. You have to equip people to bring it back to the school and use the time and work together in the classroom to support students. So it is very complex. That was a great question.
No, no, I appreciate that. And I mean, and again, and it's not, listen, we're looking forward, but there is a heavy lift, as was noted, and so we're seizing the moment, but there's a lot of reality to that, and so I just wanted to understand that better. And that moves me kind of from an HR standpoint. You know, I know that among many, I mean, the teaching industry is one of the most challenging across the board when it comes to staffing, and then when we add certain layers, I know we talked about this when we talked about ESC students, and now I would say the same when we're talking about multilingual. You know, what does that look like? Is there a conversation, maybe not here, that in the future that we can consider, I don't know what the right term is, supplements, or something to entice so we can fill that gap? Is that something, I mean, what does that look like? And how are the challenges with hiring the right staff that actually already speak multiple languages?
So, look, I'm going to bring in a topic that might come up, dual-language programs. Really, you have to have a pool of staff that speaks multiple languages. That's one of the hard parts about bringing that to fruition in a timely manner. And what we've talked about was going after grants to grow our own, to take the teaching staff we already have that's interested in learning another language, and start gearing up for that and creating a special cohort of educators. That's something we've talked about, that we're working through with our competitive grant specialists, and looking for grants to help us get that going. But it is very difficult, because ultimately, you want a certified, educated teacher. But then when we start adding these different modalities, or not modalities, these different skill sets, it does become very hard. At Tuttle, we actually have a good amount of teachers that do speak multiple languages. We did do some pre-inventories to our high multilingual learning population schools as we've been thinking about dual-language in the future. So it is hard. It's just one of those additional skill sets you look for, but it is not prevalent.
Well, it's funny, you mentioned dual-language, and Tuttle Negotiator, we're two, early on when I came on the Board, we're really focused on, particularly the parental engagement, because again, those barriers, and it's just really just creating more of a challenge on top of an already challenging situation when you can't really engage the family. And so I know that that staff has really expanded, and so what can we do in the future? I know when Dreamers Academy, I've been a longtime supporter, because again, it just elevates everything when we're able to really engage these students and all of those, I think there's great benefits for everyone, honestly, when we look at that map, I think that's really exciting. But when we look ahead as to what we can do, I love the dual-language model, I think it benefits all students. I wish that was something we had done when we were starting off early, but what does that look like for the Board? How do we help support that in the future? Some of the things you just mentioned, I just hope that we keep us informed on that, because I think that, I can see that being a barrier, and I want to make sure we are able to fund that as appropriate, so that that can expand.
Another food for thought for that is our Eastern European population in South County. So we have a large Hispanic, and then we have a large Eastern European, so when you think of dual-language, you know, that's not the same program, right? And so there's a lot of deep thinking taking place behind the scenes, because it is very complex, and we want to do it right. You know, just because you speak another language doesn't mean that you're a great deliverer of instruction. So there's that component. We have to deliver high-quality instruction. So it is complex. We do have it in the strategic plan. There is a goal to get there, but we're going to go slow to go fast so that we have the very best dual-language program when we offer it.
Love it. Well, I love the technology use, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense. I know we're obviously trying to get to the human component, but to fill that gap, kudos. And I, you know, when we look at partners, I know, and I know this, the two-generational approach still is something that our, I think it's Community Foundation, is it of Serra Zod County? And I think that works really well, but however we can expand that, again, I think that there's a lot of support there. So thank you so, this is very exciting. I appreciate all of the work and looking forward to the next discussion.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. I appreciate Ms. O'Day bringing about the fact that all this department and staff really, I remember, I was so impressed that it didn't hit the general fund, so I'm grateful that you brought that back up, because that was actually my first thing. Couple of things, because I'm kind of all over the place. The first piece, I'm confident that you have the academics piece addressed. I'm confident that your programming and your approach to working with the student first as a Gen Ed student, and then backing into the challenges language-wise is the correct way to go, and I trust all of that. One of the things, when I was interviewing Mr. Connor, when we were going through that process, was that I have been saying for four years that our largest population from a dual-language perspective was Spanish, and we had not really been doing a whole lot, if anything, to really address. And what I've learned, I've spent four years, and I'll throw this out to you, I go to Manatee County every year, they do tremendous outreach in their Hispanic community, and what I've seen is that equal to your academic approaches is the family approach. It's equal. It's not one bigger than the other. So culturally, getting the families involved sooner than later is as important as the academic approach that you've mentioned. I have a list of people that I can get you to Manatee County, I can have you start talking, best practices. I have been waiting for the opportunity to impart all of these relationships and knowledge. So please, afterwards, come to me, and I can set all those up. One of the other big places that, I'm sure you've already talked to there, is UNIDOS Now. They really have a lot of a family engagement already in place, and they can be a big support in helping with that type of community outreach. The other place that I think is an important, whether it's whichever language it is, is healthcare opportunity. And so I would stress to you that the work that we're already doing in Student Services could be easily combined, break down those silos right away, and get the, because if you look at the Title I schools and many of our Spanish speakers, that a lot of the issues that are connected to poverty, for example, are automatically connected to, and I'm sure I'm not telling you anything, but I have a ton of those kinds of resources to help move those kinds of things along. One of the things I learned, we have a Hispanic radio station, and while I was just recently running for reelection, a big place, WhatsApp, is a big, big place for the Hispanic population to get, to reach the families in their language and get them involved into events. I know that we have our website, and that it easily, thank you, Craig, converts into Spanish and all of the languages. That was a big deal for me. So those are other places to really reach out to the families. After-school programming, you're talking about the Russian, Ukrainian, and the Hispanic, especially the after-school programs that are already in South County, may have a lot of resources and networking pieces that are available to help expedite some of your work with families quickly. Again, I have all of those. One of the things that you pointed out that I thought was, and I hadn't really thought about it, is a learning disability and the crossover to English language learning, and that is enormous. And I want, I'm sure there's best practices out there to help move some of those issues along pretty quickly, but I hadn't really, that never crossed my mind, and it's, and think about, I saw on the, I encouraged you, Dr. Connor, to have the listening tour in Spanish, and we had to bring Ms. O'Day's father to come in and do the translation for us. But what I learned so much that day was that almost all of our communication that day was in fact in Spanish, not at all. I expected it to kind of be the other way, not at all, which is a good, good indicator of how much work is in front of us. And then even on our first day of school this year, I saw that at, right when parents were trying to check kids in, that they were, and we were talking about the devices then, how it would solve the problem. Here's my last question. Well, also, I just want to say, this is another question. I'm a huge proponent of the dual-language, and I know this is sort of the foundation piece. The next challenge here is in HR. I know we have, it's got to be in a recruiting aspect of knowing where those pools of populations of people are, and to be proactively going after them. Again, that's something that I would love to be able to brainstorm through, because I think there's easy ways to find some of those things on a shorter term, so that, and Spanish, as Mr. Connor and I have been talking about, is a problem in general, finding good Spanish teachers in our district. So I think this is a chance for a double whammy. Where do teachers find time for professional development if they're doing Gen Ed and they're doing? Where does that happen?
It's got to be embedded. That's why we have all of these resource teachers that are non-classroom, so we have the classroom teachers and the non-classroom teachers, and we're bringing them together monthly to support their growth and development, to take that back to the school, to support teachers that are demonstrating or have the desire to continue to learn and grow in their supports. We do, we are going to be offering training voluntarily, and that comes after school, after hours, you know, obviously we can't do that during the day unless it's done by school-based staff that we train, and they bring back, and people again prioritize that time, going back to that coaching, the modeling, and that in-classrooms support, we're really trying to develop our resource teachers around, because that's just as powerful as sitting through a traditional professional learning session. We did have a professional day scheduled for Friday with the adjustments to our calendar, which is going to be coming out soon. That's really going to hurt our ability to utilize those days for professional learning. Furthermore, just offering as many opportunities voluntarily, whether it's virtual or face-to-face over the course of several months, so people have every opportunity to take the time to do it, but it does require time. Any profession where you have to continue to grow and develop in advance, you have to take time to do that. That's a professional responsibility we all have, not only in education, but in medicine, in law, right? The new tricks and tips and the better ways to advance your practice, you have to learn new things. We do the best we can to push it into the schools. As a result, the Impact Review that you went to, we were planning those supports so that the staff could do it in a staff meeting, they could do it in a collaborative planning session that they have, they can do it when they invite the coach in. And at that particular school, they were doing learning walks, observing other master teachers. There's a lot we can do during the school day, and our... There's a lot we can do during the school day and our impact reviews are developing that job-embedded approach as well. So it's not always having to take time outside of the school day to do that work. So it's multifaceted and it's not, it's not easy. And, and in most cases, it will require time from the educators to take the time and take advantage of those courses.
So what I'm, what I think I heard you say is that it's next, it's going to be a challenge to do regular professional development in addition to the dual-language approach that we might want them, it's going to, and, and it became a challenge to the third power because we just lost 10 days. So I, I'm wondering if, and again, not for this conversation, is that if there's a way that we can look at additional staffing through grants that I might also be able to help with so that we can, sort of like a flying squad, until the teachers can get that we have expertise that can solve some of the, the learning issues for the students. So again, not for this conversation, but I would love to be able to just sort of talk our way through what a secondary approach could be so that we're not, because this is amazing and I don't want to see it fall by the wayside because we had two storms that interrupted us. I think I'm good. My last question, I promise, is what, if you had a magic wand, what do you need? What do you need?
I would say time and trust. I think that there's a plan and it takes time for that plan to hit. But we also need staff to trust that we are in this together on the same team and everything we propose is not in a sense of management, but it's in a sense of empowerment. Our program specialists sitting behind us are in those schools Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, know the teachers the best, boots on the ground and, and we want to be there helping you. It's not evaluative at all. So the trust piece and that culture, we want that to continue to evolve, but then also given the time to implement and have success from everyone. And then always, you know, where we can find time to pause and let teachers engage, that's going to be a constant battle that we, that we're dealing with and trying to problem-solve around. So those creative solutions around how you make up for time is going to be very important.
Great. I would say based upon what I saw at the Impact Review, here's what I love. Everybody loves the programming that you guys, whether it's through the reading work and what you're doing now with language. Everyone wants to do it. They're incredibly enthusiastic. I see the time is the number-one challenge and that was one of the big questions that, that I had had. So I think there, there, especially now with the learning loss that we're dealing with when it comes to climate change, we have to come up with secondary strategies of how we can solve some of these problems and keep the programs alive and not lose these great ideas. So I think that's another place that I'd love to be able to brainstorm with you, talk to the superintendent about, and then bring those ideas back to the board. Thank you so much. Well, well done.
I think also in that, if you don't mind, no question. We've been in discussion and collaborating, obviously with SCTA too, about an approach to the student calendar and the employee calendar and whether we build in potential half-days strategically throughout the calendar that could be dedicated half-day to instruction, release those students early, and then dedicate half-days to professional development to, to get more time. There is unintended consequences for that, right? It puts, it puts a burden on the community. So we're talking about, how do you do that? How do you balance that? So just so you know, there are discussions and brainstorming, no decisions have been made. But just, it talks about how do we get more time and try to do that without having teachers to stay beyond the school day.
Well, thank you. I mean, obviously the time is going to be the big, professional development is, is gigantic. And yeah, excellent presentation. I mean, at the end of the day, the restructuring, maintaining, doing, and you see that with a lot of different areas within the district that needed to have that. You know, again, is, you know, my questions were answered. It's, it's an awesome program. Everything that you're doing is working towards the, with the goal, which is to make, make our kids that much better. You know, and, you know, I can't say enough. So a great presentation. Truly appreciate all the hard time, all the hard work that goes into that. So thank you. Ms. Marinelli?
I just, I, I'd like to address that, the professional development and look at it from a different perspective. Superintendent Connor and I have had this conversation that, yes, professional development is something that a teacher can choose to take. But also, what is so incredible about this district? Because working in another district, when professional development at no cost was offered and this district offers so much professional development that, because every five years you have, a teacher, all of us have to take 60 hours by state requirement to keep our certification. So these professional development courses that are offered count towards that. And if you put that into a monetary, if teachers had to pay for that or aides or any principals had to pay for that at a graduate-level cost, that is, that's, that's a tremendous saving, but also something that this district offers to, we should be letting that know as a recruitment, that these are offered. So that is another side of it. So yes, it's time, but we all would have, would have had to take these courses anyway, whether you had to carve out at nighttime away from your family or you can take it when you, when it's offered and you don't have to pay for it. So I just think that's something we need to stress, that that is, that is a perk. Because not every district offers what Sarasota County does. And I do think this is where the program specialists are so critical, getting and working with the schools. Because I know when, through Student Services, when we had Rex Ingrick, he was everywhere and Michael Santagata on those behavior problems. And that was, that was the number-one thing that teachers had was behavior. So behavior specialists are so critical to work with teachers during the school day and be able to address a lot of what you've been talking about. And so I just think, then that just leads into the whole monitoring piece that not only are we monitor, you're monitoring the student progress, but also are you monitoring, which I know you are, but the monitoring of the resources that have been allocated to the school? And every year, are they working? Because that's been something in this district that once that position was there, it was there and it really didn't matter if it was effective or not. That's probably not the right way to say that, but I think it's, and that's why some of the issues that we have with student achievement. So I think it's going to be really critical that, and it, and if it's not working, that's okay. Because to me, that shows that we are looking at it. We're going to allocate those resources. Because when you report to us as a board where we need to have the money go, we rely on you and then Superintendent Connor to monitor that. So when you, when the budget is brought to us, we can see that things are really being looked at. So I appreciate that. And, and I just think having our parent outreach and, and I'm not, the things that you were talking about, Mr. Edwards, that will be very critical, something that our parent outreach person would be dealing with. With Mrs. Rubenstein. So thank you. Because I know she knows all that. You know a lot of what's going on, what Mr. Edwards addressed. And I think it's very critical that a school-based person is, addresses that through all of this and Superintendent Connor. So thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Ziegler?
Really quickly, well, I wanted to say to the professional development, I, I used the example of the, when we did Orton-Gillingham and we didn't offer not, we didn't have enough and teachers were dying and jumping at the opportunity to do it. And I, and my takeaway in having talked to, I mean, the, I believe so deeply that our staff, our teachers want to do everything and beyond to help their students achieve things. And so I'm grateful we're able to offer a variety of different professional development. We know that time is the challenge. I'm so grateful that we finally, I mean sadly, this has probably spanned over a decade, that at least in my time, that we really have not focused on this area. And you guys did a lot of bold moves early on despite the SRA funding going. And I'm so glad you brought that up, as Mr. Edwards also mentioned. And I, I just, I want to say to the staff, because I think time, we can't add more time. We, we're going to just do the best that we can. I mean, that's how, all of our students have to do it. We have to do the same thing. And I, I want, I think Chief O'Day, you said something to, to the staff component and I, I think that's really important. I want to make sure that we are looking forward and onward, right? If it's not, you know, we're assessing so that we can improve upon that. You guys have put forward an incredible strategy. I'm genuinely so excited. And we're just going to take it day by day. And I think, I have all the faith in the world. You guys have illustrated it when it came to ESC. You've illustrated when it comes to reading and this is again, like kind of the top three areas. So hats off to all you. I'm very excited.
Superintendent Connor?
Yeah, I think one component we haven't touched on and we are committed to looking and turning over every stone and Bonnie, our CFO knows this, is that, you know, compensation for the additional time it does take. You know, when we can provide stipends and pay and compensation for two teachers to take additional time beyond their contract to receive this professional development, we're going to look at every opportunity that we can to do that. Unfortunately, we can't do it all. So we look at grants and we're, we're making some great headway with our new grant specialist. But we're committed to making sure that we acknowledge people's time and investment in this and if we can compensate, we will do that.
Well, thank you. And no other comments. We'll go on to the, the next, on the agenda, which is the progress monitoring. Thank you. Superintendent Connor?
All right, thank you. So if you haven't seen enough numbers today, we're going to look at some more. So as you know, we've had an outstanding launch to the school year despite the challenges that we have faced with two hurricanes. We, as a part of that launch to a successful school year, all school districts face state progress monitoring assessment windows right at the launch. So as you're establishing your introductions to students, you're getting oriented to the school year, you're getting your routines in place. On top of that, teachers are faced with the challenge of administering the state progress monitoring assessment one. And so I wanted to spend a little time with the board today to just give you an update about what that data has looked like for progress monitoring one. As we get the presentation up, I'll try to stall a little bit. We've looked at, obviously from the last year, progress monitoring three is what we're evaluated on for our accountability for our grades, our school grades, our district grades. And one of the things, as we look in comparison to the previous year and looking forward to the strategic plan, we've made a chart to share with the board, as you can see on your, on the first page, almost there. There we go. All right. Let's see. Right here, if you look at the, I would say, the 2024 row, that is where we landed on progress monitoring three, which consists of how our district grade is calculated. And so you have to meet a certain percentage of the total points in order to be an A and then a certain amount to be a B or whatever. So we, we are very fortunate to continue to lead as an A school district. And, and as you compare to the previous year in yellow, the last time we had data, so some of that spans over 2022 and 2023 because we did not have gain scores in '23 because of the new assessment. We fared very well as it relates to what we had set as goals for this year in 2025. So if you look at the 2025 strategic plan row, we have outpaced our targets in every one of those cells by the numbers that you see in green. So that required us to do a little bit of resetting for this year. That's a good, that's a great thing, right? We reset our goals for this 2025 and that is the first row that you see, 2025 goal. Now, I will tell you and I will not, I'll be very transparent, these are very aggressive goals. This is very stretched in terms of, you see, we, we landed at 827. We're, and we had a 49-point growth across the entire, all of these cells last year. And we're looking for something very similar in year two. So we're going to keep stretching. I, hats off to the staff who have really made this happen. I do understand that there is a little bit of that anxiety around that. But I'm, I, I love what Rachel said earlier. This is not about management and dictatorship. This is about empowerment and support, right? When you have high accountability, there must be coupled with the right support. And that support includes professional learning, having those learning walks, talking to, to teachers about what they need. All of those things are consistently happening in our schools. So it's not just a, a top-down approach. It's really coming in and supporting our teachers as we reach towards these, these stretch goals. So before I move on on this, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of do this a little differently. If you have any questions, you can stop me along the way. But that is where we're headed for this school year. And so our strategic plan, we'll have to update that in terms of the, the, the ballot scorecards. So it all starts, one of the things I am very impressed about, and this is new with the new progress monitoring assessment, is the ability to really monitor in comparison to other school districts around K1 and 2. That was not previously done. So using the data here, you can see, what I wanted to show at least the board and the public is where we started last year at PM1 to where we are at PM1 this year, an apples-to-apples comparison. Now, these are not the same students, right? Obviously, the kindergartens have matriculated to first grade and first grade to second grade. But if you just look at the cohort from last year in kindergarten to what we have as our entering kindergartens this year, we're starting about three points above where we were last year. And as you can see in first grade, there's a point down and second grade, there's a point up, right? So I wouldn't put a lot of stock in the ups and downs of that, when you're one point, two points. Those are just data points for us as a, a school district to see, you know, are there anything that we need to uncover in that data? Is it just a result of the assessment? Are the students taking the test? What, those are the conversations that we're having related to that. So progress monitoring one probably gives you not as much, obviously, as progress monitoring two is going to give us in terms of actionable data to really move the needle and drive instruction and as, and also PM3 being that final assessment. But those are the, I just want to be clear, those are the state progress monitoring windows. Teachers are consistently using their, their own assessments throughout, in between those windows to monitor instruction and to, to provide their next steps of what they need to do. So when you get to the next slide here, this is ELA grades three through 10. These are the ones, these are the grade levels that the state really uses for the accountability part. So obviously, when you look at ELA proficiency at elementary, that consists of third, fourth and fifth grade, middle school, sixth, seventh and eighth, and high school, ninth and 10th. And so you can see where our cohorts are. So we're starting a little bit lower with the cohort in third grade than we were last year. So the good thing about this that we were talking about in our, as we're strategically planning, how we're going to support instruction, is that we're able to implement our third-grade push plan much sooner than we did last year, right? So that's going to be, I, I believe it's going to have dividends on that as well. But if you can see with such the success that we had in third grade last year, look at where we're at in fourth grade with a five-point starting ahead of where we were. That aggressive push at third grade has looked to sustain itself over, because five points, I would say, is more significant. Usually does drop, right? And so you can see across the board where we've got some ups and downs and the team is looking deeply at each of these grade levels to determine what that support looks like. This is where common planning really comes in to effect, right? When teachers of, at these grade levels can look at the data and determine where do we need to spend more time? What skills may we need to reteach? Do we need to pull small groups for individual students? This data helps drive a little bit of that discussion. Not the only thing, but it is a big part of it. When we look at math, again, starting at K1 and 2, we've got a little, starting down one in kindergarten, starting a little better in first grade and a little better in second grade as compared to PM1 last year. We did put the final, PM3 of last year in that final column just as a reference point for you. When we look here, we see that there is more red than there is green. So this is obviously a conversation starter for us to say, okay, we're not starting as good as we were starting last year. So this is really driving the conversation around our, what is our game plan with this cohort of students to make sure that we mitigate or eliminate any potential deficits that we may see by PM3. we may see by PM three? So the conversation is around, you know, is it a professional learning opportunity? Is it more a student-based resources that we need to plug into? We've talked about a lot of things around how we're going to go about addressing that we are starting a little further behind in math than we were start, than we did last year. So it's a great place for us to at least know that and then build upon what our strategies are going to be. And I can tell you, we put such a huge emphasis on literacy last year, and we see we've got to address math. At the high school level and, of course, middle school, who takes algebra and geometry, we do not have a state progress monitoring for those two courses, even though they're a part of the state calculation for school grades. They do not do a PM one, two, and three. They just do a three for that. So what you see in the data here is 23 PM three, 2024 PM three, and where we landed. Now, here's what we're doing, because as a district, we need to monitor that. We created our own, what I would call mock PM one, right? It's a, it's an assessment to see where we're, where we're at with all of the standards starting the year, because we do know kids come in with knowledge. So what, knowledge do they have? And where are things we can accelerate? And where are things that we need to start from the beginning? Because we know there are many of those standards they haven't learned when they went into algebra and geometry. So we're going to build our own district, PM one and PM two, to monitor our progress in these two courses, since we don't have that from the state. So this is a breakdown of our elementary ELA achievement levels from, by bucket, by level one through five. So if you see red, that means that we have more students in level, for level one and two, it's more students in that percentage than last year. If it's three, four, and five, red means that there are less students in those buckets as compared to last year. So again, third grade, if you look at PM one from 2023, we have thirty-eight percent of our students, level one, we're starting the year out with forty percent, right? So just to give you an idea, if that number shrank, like for level two, we had twenty-nine to twenty-eight, that's a good thing. We want less level ones and twos, and we want more three, fours, and fives. If you look at grade four in the middle, that band, those three rows there, you'll see that we have less level ones, the same amount of level twos. We have more threes, fours, and fives than we did last year, as, as it is stated in PM one progress monitoring assessment, because it does give them a level for PM one. And then in fifth grade, you will see we're same, starting out with the same percentage of level ones, less level twos, less level threes, but more fours and fives. Now again, these differences are maybe one point. So not significant, but something for us to monitor as we go through the year. The next one is middle school. So we can see seventh grade's looking strong across the board. We had all greens. So that means we're reducing the amount of level ones and twos, and we've increased, starting the year out, increasing the level three, fours, and fives. Sixth grade and eighth grade, we've got some reds and some greens that we're looking at there. As we move to high school, you can see ninth and 10th grade. 10th grade, we've identified as an area of focus for us this year. I can tell you, we've already strategically started the year out, I believe, in a much better spot, because we now have a strategic program we are utilizing for intensive reading students. So those are students who are level ones and twos on the previous year's state assessment. They are now in the Read 180 program, which was not there last year. We've implemented it this year, and we're hoping to see some great success with that. We, as we're doing impact reviews and walking schools, we're seeing some great things happening. So I think a lot of the, the reds have already been addressed in the summer, as we were planning to launch the school year in anticipation, that you can never, you can never just take for granted that every cohort of students is going to come in stronger than the previous year's cohort. That, that's why you have the data, the PM one data, to tell you what you need to do. And then in math, more, I think there's more work to be done in math for us. I think too, we've, we've got to continue to work on content development for our staff, making sure that they have, they're equipped with all the strategies and resources to teach to the depth and complexity of the standards. This is not two plus two or three plus four. This, these standards are very complex, even beginning at third grade. And so the more that our staff are very familiar with those standards and the, and the depth at which they need to teach that, the better off our students will be. So we'll continue to provide guidance and support around how to teach the, to the complexity of the standard, as well as working with the students' individual needs through small group instruction. You can see middle school here. Now, if you look at middle school at eighth grade, you might go, wow, we've only got one percent level fours of eighth grade. Now, remember, eighth grade is a transitional year where students who are proficient typically are enrolled in algebra or geometry. So these students, there's, it's a smaller number of students in that cohort, and they're, they're mostly all level ones and twos, and they're in the eighth grade pre-algebra class, while the three, fours, and fives are taking algebra and geometry. So that's why that data looks a little different than the other cohorts. When we look at our federal student groups, our ESSA groups, you'll see the breakdown here of where we're starting from PM one of last year to PM one of this year. And what I want to draw your attention to, again, I, I don't, I don't get overly excited about one up or one down, but when I see three up for our students with disabilities, it's telling me something there. And you know, we've, we put a lot of strategy last year, starting to, to address that population through the ESC review and getting some things moving in that direction. So I feel like that's starting to get some lift, and we'll continue to see that with that particular subgroup. With the presentation that you saw today with our ELLs and multilingual learners, I think you're going to begin to see, this team just initiated this year within the last couple of weeks, right? And so the work that will transpire over the course of this year and the several years, we'll begin to see a difference with our ELL subgroup as well. And then this is just, the next two slides are just different ways to, or this slide is just a different way to look at what you saw up here in the table. Breaking down comparison of last year to this year. And we did break out traditional and charter as well, just as a, as a reference point. And then the same with math. You can see our subgroups, we've got more red here, so that's areas of focus in math for us. And then the last slide being a bar graph that represents what you see in the table. So all in all, I think the, the takeaway here is that we've administered PM one. Hopefully, there will be continuity of instruction and we have no more storms. I'm going to go ahead and say that out loud. No more storms, no more lost days of instruction.
No jinx.
I think that this data will really help us drive, not only at a district level the conversation, but really through the impact reviews and working with our principals. This is the focus of what we talk about at principals meetings, like what is the data telling us? So then where do we plug in the right support? What is the direction we need to take with our, at each grade level, whether it's reading or math? And I do think the conversation is, we've got to put a bigger focus on math, because we're starting this year out more in the whole than we were last year. And so we, we need to overcome that. So that will be the thrust of a lot of the conversations with professional learning and academics moving forward. So I'll stop there and take any questions.
Ms. Marinelli?
And, and this is not meant to be political at all, even though it'll probably come out that way. But with math, I mean, math is math. Numbers are numbers. So when, when we lost ground on math, when the core knowledge wa, not, what was that called? Common, common core? And the math, yes, the math changed to, you know, we used to have new math, and then it was another new math. And parents were like, I, I don't even know how to help my child. Because they did the whole, textbooks came up with this whole different way of doing math. So do we know, I mean, are, are we back to the more math is math, especially with addition, subtraction, multiplication? Which is, if you don't have that, you're not going to be able to move forward. So are we back to the more traditional? Or are we still with that common core new math type, where a lot of parents, me included, are like, how do you even come up with this? Because I still get that from parents. I don't know how to help my child, because this makes no sense to me.
Well, I, I will say that the Florida standards are very, very similar to what you would have saw with a common core standard. There's been some changes along the way that make them a little different, but the complexity and some of the strategies of how we teach that math has a flavor of that. But, but what teachers, what teachers are equipped with is how do you, how do you break it down in a way that students can understand it? And then hopefully, we can translate that and provide resources to help our parents support that work at home. But it's complex. It's not, it's not easy. The Florida standards are very complex, and that's why the deeper we have, the more knowledgeable we are about the, the constraints of the standards, so that we're not teaching outside of that, and we're really teaching to the depth of what's asked. Because you can't stop, some of these, some of these standards are very, they're multifaceted standards, and they go very deep. And if we stop before we get down to the bottom of what the kids are expected to know, that hurts them as they spiral up to the next standard. So it's just continuing to making sure that we're really getting to the full complexity, the, the depth, so that it sets them up as we spiral this information up to grade levels. But yes, it's complex.
Mr. Edwards?
I'm good. Only really want to say that I, I think it's kind of the same place, is that you just need time to let the programs take hold. And, and I appreciate that you're empowering and supporting. I, I think that we're in the same spot.
Ms. Sigler?
Mine's just more a comment. So I know, I love, I mean, I love the data. I think it's interesting when you look through this and going back on last year, seeing how, how micro-targeted you guys got when it came to reading and seeing the outcomes, which is amazing. No pressure when we look at this year. But, but I, so, you know, for me, when we look at the aggregate data, I think it's very fascinating. I appreciate, one, I love the updates, but I, I think the multi-year trends are more compelling in general when I look at aggregate data or cohort trends over a year. But, you know, to know where we are and to know you guys have a pulse on it, which I had no doubt, but this just reaffirms that, I think we're in a good place. I think Mrs. Marinelli's point's well taken, and something we did talk about, certainly when the standards changed, and they always change. Well, actually, let me go back to, I really love that you guys are creating your own PM one. I think you've done similar things, at least when it comes to assessing, even because every year, you never know, we're going to change the standards again. And so being able to see again that aggregate year-over-year cha, trend helps when there's this static comparison, and you have really built that in. So I love that. But when it comes to parent support, I mean, we have done so many things in the last couple of years, but I do think that's a great area. Again, time, and we have to focus on our core competency, but just some of those videos. I mean, that's a great communications project, but if there are little things that can be done to share parents on how to do that. But I also know our teachers do a really great job with those resources, so.
Well, and I know you, you and I have had conversations. You've mentioned this parent resource page where we could, you know, maybe break it down by grade level, and that's something that the team is, is investigating how we can do that. Yep, time, it'll take time, but making sure we equip parents with the right resources and aligning it to the timing in which content is being taught is also what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, though.
Well, and I look at it in the, looking at, you know, at a, like a forty thousand-foot level, is that I look at it, we targeted third grade reading, we looked at the scores, and we look at where they are in fourth grade. So if we look at that as the benchmark, what's going to happen in the fourth? And what are they looking at when they get to fifth? And, and that means that we are going to grow when you look down the road, five, 10, six, seven years. That's going to pay off so much in reference to, you know, I know Mr. Edwards talks about, you know, what are you going to do after, are you going to college? What are you doing at trade schools? That's going to show some big dividends, because you just don't look at the trend and look at the bigger picture. If that's what our goal is, is to have kids be able to read, do the things that they need to do in third grade. Now in fourth grade, they're starting that much higher. Then what are they going to look at at fifth grade? And then that's next year's third graders. And then that's where that whole thing, to me, is where I see, you know, it's, yes, it's just the first PM one, but I can see that, you know, that's really what, you know, I know my goal as a school board member is to make our students that much better, and it shows that that should be the trend as it goes every single year. And I think, you know, for you to get like fifty to sixty points this year increases perfect, Mr. Connor. Thank you for, for being able to do that. I think that, but I, I just think it's, it's really, it's great information, and that's where I focus on, as I just look, okay, third to fourth grade, that's where it was. What's next year going to look like? What's the next year going to look like? It's just going to increase everybody's educational level, and I think that is really the goal that we should have here as a community. So, so thank you with that. So and without any more questions, we'll go on to the next thing. Mr. Connor?
All right, we're going to move to our safety and security update. We'll have Chief Ruiz, Jason Overbay, and Dr. Kemp. They're going to be providing the quarter two security update.
Okay, good morning. Take an opportunity to tell each of you how impressed I was with the teams, the ops team, everything that's taken place with the storm, with Milton passing. I mean, everything pre-storm, as we're waiting on Ms. Sigler, everything pre-storm, the shelter operations, the principals assigned to that, the admin, the essential personnel, our safety security, our chief, our, our, our school police, the HR team, Ashley Ramaka and the HR team that did the assignment of essential staffing throughout the entire event. Bonnie Penner and the, and the business services team, by the way, who made sure that we processed payroll early in, in anticipation of, of connectivity issues that indeed took place. We wanted to make sure that our employees, that we took care of them, and they didn't have to worry about being paid. So we even, kudos to that team and the rock stars that were in payroll that came in to ensure that all of our payroll was processed during that time. All the STC EOC team, the emergency operation team at STC, everybody behind us, that we spent a lot of time together, a lot of time together over the last four or five days. Our communication coordination, our team here with communicating with our county agencies, the communication with the public, they did an outstanding job, as well as our support services team to reach out, to ensure that our, our people are, are checked on, they're taken care of. I've been extremely impressed with that. And then the storm came, right? And then when the storm came, our facilities, planning, construction, our maintenance custodial personnel have been working around the clock to ensure that we, we're ready, to do everything we can with the damage assessments and detailed assessments. I think the board needs to know how impressed I am. If I had a, if I had a one descriptor, it'd be first class. I mean, first-class commitment, first-class everything, everything to our food service, dealing with food supply shortages, our valued partners and contractors that stepped up in this time of need, whether it's debris removal, trees, tree issues, site clearance. I just feel compelled to let you know how proud I am to be associated with Sarasota County Schools and all the teams associated with what we did during this last particular week, and most importantly, how much we care about our employees and reaching out, making sure we take care of them. As a result of all of those variables that everybody plays a part in, I can assure you the fact that we are ready, we will be ready to open four days, really four full days after an event like that is, is, is impressive. And I'm thankful for all the people and their commitment and what they did with that, safety, security, everything that took place in the shelters, everything that took place post-shelter and continues to take place today. All power restored. All air conditioner HVACs will be, will be rolling in the morning. So I'm so thankful for the team. Just, Mr. Connor, I just wanted to say that, because I've seen a lot in thirty-five years in different places, and the commitment here is unmatched when it comes to when our backs are against the wall, what we're doing. Thankful for that. So with that said, we're going to present today our safety, security, our chief police and Jason Overbay, our, some of our compliance with the Florida Department of and Jason Overbay, our, some of our compliance with the Florida Department of Education, what we need to do to make the October 1 deadline, I mean, to make that deadline. So thank you so much, Jason. Chief.
Real quick, I just want to echo what Dr. Kemp said, specifically as far as security at the shelters in the storm. And this is the first time that we used security specialist. And I know it's a fairly new position within the district. And I just want to echo what I heard from principals, from administrators and other county staff that was working at the shelters, that obviously we had our SROs there as law enforcement, but the assistance and the extra eyes that the security specialist provided during an event where we had a significant population in our schools was very impactful and helped a lot. And so I wanted, moving over to Jason, who was in charge of that section, I wanted to thank you for that and let you guys know that it was a wonderful addition to security, safety and security in our schools.
Good morning. Thank you, Chief. It certainly had nothing to do with me. We have great people that work for us and we're very, very proud of them and everything that they put forward through the storm. Good morning Superintendent Connor, Vice Chairman Enos, and distinguished members of the board. Today, we're going to talk about our state requirements we have to have done prior to November 1st, 2024. We are required to do a quarter two safety and security announcement on state compliance. We also have to do our Florida Safe School Assessment Tool, School Security Risk Assessments. So we will talk about both of those things this morning. And then at the end, we will kind of go over everything as a composite. This year in quarter one, we are required by 1473 to talk about the compliance visits that the state has done. There have been no compliance visits during quarter one in Sarasota County. So 0% of our schools have been inspected by the Florida Department of Education Office of Safe Schools. So that is our requirement that we are supposed to announce in open-air meetings with the board. We did have nine safe school officer checks this year. What a safe school officer check is, is a compliance officer from the state comes onto school grounds. They ask to see the safe school officer, which can be a guardian, a security aide that has guardian training, SRO, or a SRD2 or a deputy. So one of those, and once that safe school officer comes up, they ask them a couple of questions, they mark off that they are there, and then they leave. So during all of our nine safety officer checks that were done this year, we had safety officers at our schools. As you know, all of our district schools have school police officers on them. We have a few schools, Sarasota County and Northport cover with their police and deputies. And then we have just a few schools that have guardians. But we have been in 100% compliance with that every time we've been checked, but especially this year. The next thing we'll go ahead and start into is the Florida Safe School Assessment Tool. We do meet on this or talk about this every year. We know that in, after the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Commission met and Senate Bill 7026 was signed into law, the Florida Safe School Assessment became mandatory for all schools to submit to the districts and then to the state. This has to be done by October 1st of every school year. We also have to make sure that charters have access to this and they have the same right and ability to submit that to us and also to the state. All schools submitted their Safe School Risk Assessment Tool on time and we were 100% compliant in all of our submissions to the state. A big part of what the school security risk assessment is now is about hardening funding. And so we are, we work very close with all of the schools, including the charters, to make sure that we've talked to them about what they want to use hardening funds for and to make sure that they've answered the questions correctly inside of the school security risk assessment, to make sure that the state will approve their hardening funding applications. The amount of questions that are in the Safe School Assessment, we used to give you a number and say there's 652 questions. So we can't even do that anymore because there are subset questions. So if you answer one question one way, it's going to list an entire new chapter of questions that have to be asked. So there are hundreds and hundreds of questions that are dependent on what chapter they're in and how they answer those questions. And we go through every single one of them to make sure that what they've come up with as their kind of hardening requests, that the state is going to go ahead and say, yes, we agree. And that is something that you're going to be able to do. We, as this part of this meeting, we have to do an executive summary or district best practices. And then after this meeting, we will complete that. That is the requirement that we have to have done by November 1st. So we appreciate very much being put in Superintendent Connor into this spot so that we can meet that deadline. What we do is kind of what we were just talking about. We take all of what the district, and we'll show you a slide here in a minute of some of the things that district administrators felt like were important on their school grounds, that we take all of those things, put them in together, we put it into a best practice report. We'll bring that to Dr. Kemp and the safety team that he pulls together and we'll talk about that for the district hardening grant funds and what we plan on doing with district funds this year that we get from the state. So as always, Chief Enos, as you know, we tend to lead and never follow. We are continuing in that practice here in Sarasota County. And it is because of Superintendent Connor, the cabinet, and this board that we're able to continue to do that. One of the things that we like to highlight is our threat management team coordinator, District Threat Management Coordinator, Michael Santagata, and Deputy District Threat Management Coordinator, Cindy Wetzel. They do an amazing job. And we are expanding on that with what we are doing here inside of this county to make sure that we're doing what the Florida model is really put in place for, which is to capture these kids that are in crisis, get them the resources that they need, and move them through into being students again and get them past this situation while they still face whatever charges might be there or whatever disciplines there by the school, to make sure that we are pulling all the resources from the state, the county, and from the school district to make sure that these students do not fall through the cracks. It is something that we are very proud of and it is an area in the state that we are really setting the trend here in Sarasota County. To get back into the school safety risk assessment, all schools, like I had mentioned, are compliant. We are continuing to do the school, required school safety tours where we invite first responders from all over the county to come onto our campuses. We ask them what they see, that areas that they think we can improve. We bring all that together, we put it into reports, we present it to Dr. Kemp and the safety team to make sure that we're looking at everything from as many different angles as we can. The school district, we did also receive mapping funding this year from, we got a grant from the state. All of our schools, including all of our charter schools, have been mapped. We are now in the final area of that mapping where we're doing our layering for emergency events on campuses and other types of things where we layer the different maps. And then they will be provided to all emergency responders in Sarasota County and the state in whatever format that they choose to receive those maps in. So we're very excited about that. Another part of what we pulled out of the school security risk assessment, again, is just highlights from administrators of areas that they feel they would like to, for the district to look at. And some of this obviously is going to change because this was all had to be turned in prior to Hurricane Helene and also Hurricane Milton. So we kind of need to reevaluate with some of the administrators' things. But 31.5% of schools felt like fencing improvements needed to occur. 38.5 wanted some traffic calming or some type of dismissal system that would improve dismissal safety. 64% of schools wanted more or felt like they needed more assistance with 1473 and some of the challenges that we've had with monitoring gates and things along those lines. And then 66% of schools wanted some help with LTE boosters and things like that to kind of help with communication with students and staff. The SSRA, like I was saying, is filled in by security teams, by the school safety team at every school. Every school's required to have a school safety team. It's something we put in place back when Chief Enos was our chief of police. On those teams, we have an administrator, we have a custodial person, we have the FNS manager from that school, we have a teacher, we have the SROs. Sometimes we get to have the security aides on it. So it's a very diverse group of people who look at security differently and they come together and put this report together for each school. So we get a very good understanding of what the staff feels the security is on their campus and not just administrators and law enforcement. We are continuing as a district to move forward with fencing and gate improvements. We are upgrading cameras. Sean O'Keefe, the director over security technology, is constantly upgrading our cameras, our camera systems and our access control. Y'all are aware of some of the other systems that we are putting in. We are merging our school communication network, our radio systems with the county and working on improving that with the expansion of the district, with adding in new schools. We're working on the county to make sure that we're going to be able to meet all of those demands. And we are always collaborating like with student services and information technology to make sure that we are working together and bringing our systems in so that they are complementary with each other and also meeting the needs of the strategic plan that the superintendent has put forward. The school, Sarasota County Schools meets and exceeds all of the best practice thresholds in all school safety areas. Meeting these standards for us, however, is not enough. Sarasota County continues to push forward with better ways to work with all of our stakeholders, improving the environment at schools for our students to learn and excel. Our recommendations with this report is that we continue improving school electronic and physical security infrastructure, continue our efforts in threat management training with staff and outside agencies, continue efforts in youth mental health, first aid, thank you, Megan Taylor, pursue funding for continued hardening of schools through other grants, continue with active shooter training and drills with all law enforcement partners, and improve communications within the school with emergency responders and staff. I think I forgot to move that forward. I apologize for that. We especially want to thank Superintendent Connor, Dr. Kemp, and Mr. Dumas for all of their help. Chief Ruiz has been a good leader for us. Sean O'Keefe, Joni Kennedy, Heath Guck, Borbala Stevenson, and Sergeant Mary Thurman really helped us pull all of these reports together from each school and make sure that we were not missing any of the Is or Ts in that so that we would be ahead when it came to state compliance and with the hardening grant that's coming. So in closing, our summary, that has to be provided by me, the school safety specialist for Sarasota County, is that we hope you accept this report. That report's going to be brought forward in tonight's board meeting for y'all to vote on and approve. And then once that is done, we will submit that to the state and the Department of Education so that we remain in compliance with all security-related. And that is all that I have. And I'm happy to answer any questions or turn it over.
Thank you very much. I always appreciate hearing also, just, I have no doubt and I believe it, and I've heard it every hurricane, about how the, just the amazing work and the customer service. And I heard, I know a lot of us got responses from the community, so I thank you all for your work. Quick question, because I know from a timing standpoint, one of the items was fencing. What's the average, and I don't know if you know, this is the average life cycle for our, because I know we staggered, we started in, before MSD. So we started doing perimeter fencing, I want to say 2016, and then fast-tracked everything certainly after MSD. But I know when you have that percentage, and I'm not including any of the storms, what's their average life cycle for our fencing around our schools? Or is it just kind of piecemeal? Do we know?
It depends upon the circumstance.
Okay.
And what we're learning from the last two events is, you know, some of our, I mean, we love the signage that gets put on signs.
Yeah, right.
All that-
Schools do. I know they do.
Well, I'm sure they do. But it creates a drag. And so there's some things that can happen to the fencing that creates issues for us down the road, like those signs that create drag on, with wind events and knock them over. So we've learned some things regarding the big, heavy gates and things when the storm approaches this time. But as far, it just depends on the circumstance. I will also say this, a lot of the fencing requests or the improvement requests was for additional fencing.
So that was my next question.
Right.
I was going to say, because I'm just-
They like to have it somewhere else, sectioned off somewhere else, in different places and locations. But we have a pretty robust preventative cycle for fencing and that is a perimeter requirement and it gets priority in our capital plan.
Gotcha. Thank you. And that was my next question was, is it, is it not just the actual integrity of the fence, but is it more or less expanding upon? And I know we have to be sensitive with certain information, but like egress, et cetera. So just, we'll look forward to more around that. And then the traffic, I know, again, some of that's around us when it comes down to dismissal. A lot of that is also with our partners at the county or related municipality. What, is there any kind of one specific issue? Or is it, I mean, I know drop-off and traffic jams, they are very difficult to prevent, but kind of what was that takeaway? Is it creating, are we aware of any security exposures or heightened security exposures there?
It's more all of it combined.
Okay.
So the stress we're putting on major thoroughfares because of dismissal, the size of the campus and parents and other people, you know, coming on and blocking areas, making it difficult for people to get into parking spaces or gain access to the building, the amount of time that these things kind of take. Arrival is always also kind of a little difficult. But arrival is usually a little more staggered than dismissal is, right? So dismissal is at a time and everybody wants to get in and get out as quickly as they can. And then it's the pressure that it puts on our radio system. A lot of schools use our radios exclusively for dismissal to move kids this way and that way. And that puts a lot of pressure on our radio system. So we're looking at things that we can bring together, a lot of different technologies to make it safer while at the same time speed the system up so that we reduce stress on our radio system, we reduce stress on the main arteries of the county, and we're able to get kids safely to their parents or whoever's picking them up or to the bus or wherever they're going and that we can track that also so that we know where the kids are and how they are leaving our campuses. So it's kind of a combination of everything and we're trying to find that tool that kind of meets all those needs or those tools that we can bring together to meet all of those needs.
Two things we see is requests for assistance with stacking, vehicle stacking processes, entry-exit. And the second biggest thing we see is requests for speed bumps, signage, things to help direct parents and those that are being picked up in those zones to follow those processes and procedures.
And that's on our campus usually, not, we're not talking, okay.
Correct.
Good to know. All right. Well, thank you for everything you guys do. I appreciate it.
Mr. Edwards?
Couple of questions. Where we have the improved communication with the emergency responders and staff, I thought we had really spent multi-millions of dollars with Motorola to make all of that happen. Where are we still in gaps?
So it's, now it's training, not district staff, but county, sheriff's deputies, where our frequencies are, how they can get in them, how they can use them. We meet with them, we train them. It's always an improving process because it's always, there's turnover. There's always so much turnover. And it's meeting with, and it's part of our school safety tours that we- safety tours that we do. It's a big part of what we talk to all the different jurisdictions is, this is where we are at on your frequencies. Their dispatch, we meet with them to make sure. It isn't, we'll have to talk about expanding the system because of the growth of the district, but it isn't that the system is there, it's functioning, we're not adding anything to that system. It's just now, we're working with our partners and through their turnover and through our school safety tours to make sure they're always aware. It's just an area that we never want to say that we're done in because we don't know who's responding to our campuses during these emergencies, and we want them to know that they can get directly in touch with our principal or somebody else, not just the SRO who's trying to deal with the same situation they are through the radio system. So, it isn't, it's done, it's just we keep it there to make sure we're always doing that training and always pushing it as one of our top things when we talk with emergency responders.
And I'd like to personally thank the board for the investment that you put in our radio communications because it paid off immensely even in this last storm. Without cell towers, cell service was disrupted. We had no email, we had no access to the internet to do the survey one, two, three damage assessments. And because of the investment and the upgrades in the radio systems, it has made me reevaluate to look to see what else we can do with that to ensure that we continue to make that as robust as we can. So, when we go through periods of no communication at all, we have ways to communicate. We communicated with shelters, we did roll calls, we did things that we would not be able to do online, all through the radio communications that you guys, you guys supported as well. So, thank you so much for that. That made a big, big difference in this storm.
Well, as an individual board member, I felt it was essential. It was a lot of money, and I think it was two separate votes of a lot of money over a two-year process. So, I'm glad to hear it's not a hardware issue, it's more of a training issue. That makes me feel a whole lot better, understanding we're going to have to add equipment as we grow. I'm getting a lot of questions in, around active shooter training regarding an ALIS training. I've looked at it online. Is that, is that something that, I just want to be able to answer my constituents when they bring it up.
So, ALIS training is active shooter training that was adopted in a national-wide basis through law enforcement agencies, and some agencies follow it, some districts follow it, and it is a good training. We actually have our own active shooter training, which covers pretty much everything ALIS covers plus more. And on top of that, we are strategic in doing our training also with our agency partners. So, going back to communication and a lot of things, when there's a critical incident, communication is usually the biggest issue, whether you're on the same channel or not, or switching channels, and especially within school buildings that sometimes it's hard to get out and transmit. So, working and training, especially with communications, is very important. But we do, we're not, we are 100%, our police officers are 100% trained in active shooter training, and we do that annually. So, so ALIS is just a standardized format of training that was adopted. It's known nationally, but we, yet, we don't call it ALIS.
It's built in.
It's built into the training that we do, yes.
Lastly, in the recommendations of continued efforts for youth mental health first aid training, can you describe what that is?
So, as you know, we're required to be at 80% for our staff. We have to make that report, I think it is July 1st of every year, to the state. Our goal is to be beyond 80% and the state outlined who has to be trained. And we are way over 80% with who has to be trained. So, we're looking now at other staff because it is such good and important training that aren't required to be trained by the state and making sure that we're offering them that ability to go into that class and learn those tools so that they can recognize when our students are in trouble and it not just be the staff that the stout, that the state has outlined.
Thank you. I focused mostly on recommendations because we're obviously in a continuous improvement model. So, thank you so much. I'm obviously ever grateful for our security team and the work that goes into keeping our students and our staff safe. So, thank you very, very much.
Ms. Marinelli?
Thank you. Excellent report. I have a few questions and a few comments usually. I find it interesting that on the school compliance visits, that there were zero from Department of Ed. Did they give you any reason why?
Well, to be honest, we don't ask.
Okay.
We.
Why aren't you coming?
We were visited extensively in fourth quarter of 2023-2024 school year, which was prior to 1473 being passed. So, I think their focus, because every one of our schools has been visited by the state of Florida in the last three years. I think their focus was going to districts that had not been at 100%. And if you'll remember in our report that we provided last quarter, the only violation that we had was that one Cessar certificate was not available at the time that the person asked for it. We got that Cessar certificate before they left the school that day, but it just wasn't available when they asked. So, Sarasota's not a district that they really focus on. They were, they're in other parts of the state looking at them, but we expect them to be coming soon.
No, and I think that's, that might be a caveat that the public knows, because I think that's tremendous, because if there are districts that aren't, they need to spend the time there. If ours is in compliance and has been for three years, that's kudos to everybody, the schools. So, I think that could be stated. I, I do have to say, it's just amazing how things have changed and keep getting added since Columbine and to where we are now. And with that, I think there has, you know, there's such a balance that the schools try to do of meeting all the safety requirements, plus making it a welcoming environment when parents walk in to know, because, you know, when you walk into the schools now, the first thing you see is that, that barrier. And it takes a lot to have people to feel welcome by the way things are now. And I just would like to know, I mean, through all these years, I was here when Columbine and everything that.
1999, just to put that out, 1999, Ms. Marinelli.
But it, I mean, it had such an impact on all school personnel, because you just couldn't imagine. And now, it just seems, you know, but, so how many unfunded mandates are there now that the districts have to put their own money in, which, you know, that's another balance, the educational part? So, how many unfunded, can you just give a little ballpark?
I'd be afraid to make that projection publicly, but I can tell you that there are more underfunded mandates than the unfunded mandates. So, when you take a look, when you take a look at the fact that the majority of our facilities were not constructed for the, the security requirements we have today, schools just weren't built that way.
No.
So, the cost incurred with trying to come in compliance, whether that's issues with 1473, whether it's hardening our facilities, access controls, the Aphones, the perimeter fencing, the, all the things that have changed as a result of things that have happened from 1999 to present. You know, they're all layers of the onion, and we talk about that all, it's another layer of the onion of security that we try to put in place because we want to be in the best position we can be in to ensure that if, if an incident takes place, we've done everything we can do to prevent further loss of life or further injury in an event like that. The single biggest threat is still, in my opinion, the mental health, the mental health component and early identification of mental health issues. Lots of times with these incidents, the suspects involved in that are allowed to be in our, are supposed to be there, you know? So, it just puts an extra, it puts extra responsibility on us to try to make sure that we put every layer that we can in and that we have the appropriate training and that our people feel, feel prepared and ready if and when an event takes place. And again, early identification, the work we're doing in support services, the work we're doing with our response teams, the home visits, things of that nature. You saw with all the Fortify Florida, all these, all these things that take place, the mental health component is still the one, is a variable we really are expected to control, but it's very difficult to control that variable.
Well, and I agree, because most of my career was as a school counselor and working in student services. So, that's why I'm always advocating for the trained professionals. And you don't always know who that person, that child is, because some kids can fool. But I can guarantee you, from kindergarten on up, you, there are signs, and that you ask any teacher, any counselor, any staff, they can tell you, we got to watch this one. And they're probably in a group somewhere or being talked to by somebody, usually the school counselor, and then they refer to the social worker or the psychologist. So, I think that's critical and that's another fine balance of the budget. But I did, I did write down about the, the mental health piece, and I, I just don't think kids realize when they do some of these, whether it's calling in that, you know, the school's going to, they don't think past, ooh, the attention. They don't realize that that's a felony. And if you're like 13 and you got a felony, that doesn't go away. And how, the seriousness of that offense, it's not a video game. This is real life. And, you know, the school system cannot do it all. We are not the community. We are part of the community. So, there needs to be the parental support, there needs to be community support, because we can't do it all. And that's always a balance. But how do you have parents talk to their kids about the seriousness of this? And, and they probably, many, many do, but when the kids aren't away, they're away from that, and they all get together, and it's like, ooh, this will be cool. They don't realize what they've just done.
On that note, I will tell you, when you have processes in place where they can report, they see something, say something. I can tell you, every one of those threats are looked at, you know, and processed through. But I'm, I'm encouraged by the comfort in which our students and individuals in the community feel comfortable reporting things through Fortify Florida or directly to school admin or directly to the SROs. To see something, say something is the best, one of the best defenses we can do, and it's on us to make sure we act on every one of those to follow through.
Absolutely. Well, you know, perfect example, Mr. Edwards and I were at Venice High School for the 9/11, and next thing we know, through the streaming, and aside from the seriousness of it, you're thinking, don't they know that they're going to be caught because they streamed it right through?
Yeah.
The school? It's like.
I think it's important for us to have, as we do, a zero tolerance on that, to enforce a law when the law is broken, but also to have a robust communication plan like we do here and how Superintendent has done, where we, we put out a message right away. We had a convening of all law enforcement leaders by Timinos and all those, and constantly send that message, not only to students, but to parents and the community at large to say, hey, this is not a joke, this is an issue, these are the consequences, and we all have to be on board, the school department, our parents, and our community. So, and I think it's just, it's just a constant thing that has to happen.
Oh, absolutely.
Because the next year, the next grade, next level kids come up, and they think it's a joke as well. So, we just have to be on top of that.
And it's going to always, we're going to always have that. But I, I really appreciate, and I know for this, for Hurricane Milton, I did not do that, but for Helena, I visited a couple of schools before because Milton, you just knew was a little different. But I have to say, with all the security in place, even though I had my badge out, I knew what was happening because the security people, it's like they see you walk up, but they kind of put that line there, but in a very low-key way. But, you know, and of course, after I identified myself, blah, 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 it was in the door. Because, you know, when you have people coming from the community and you have mental health issues with many of those people that come, adults that come into our shelters, it's just so important to have those security processes and people in place. So, thank you. I, this is excellent. And I just know it's always evolving and it always will be. So, thank you.
I know there were, time's certain for the executive session. I'll only say a couple really, really quick things. The biggest thing that I see in the challenge moving forward is, is one of the things that we've never been able to do here at the district is be able to get the voluntary compliance in reference to Alyssa's law. So, one of the things that I'm going to talk about is that we're going to have to probably go to something like Synthegix, which is what Manatee County has, but what is what the teacher used in Georgia in order to lock the school down. That way, every single staff member, every single person has that and has access to it. It's all geofenced. They fixed a lot of problems. You know, I brought Raptor here to the district a long time ago, worked with Mr. Overbay doing their emergency management platform, which was the first one. But I think it's something now, because of the compliance issue, that we never, ever want to have an employee that's not going to be able to lock the school down because they weren't able to or did not put that on their mobile, put it on their phone. So, that's something moving forward. I know with 1473, I have a lot of conversation with the Office of Safe Schools, met the new supervisor up there in Tallahassee. They have lots of challenges in that their site visits are twice as long because that they have to go into such more stuff due to 1473, and they have to be a lot more thorough in that because there's a lot of moving parts with those pieces. In reference to this, I mean, appreciate that, always lead, never follow when it comes to school safety. I would also say what Ms. Marinelli said, we have to be very careful, and I always walked that line, there's a big difference between turning our schools into jails than to be schools. And, you know, if you follow the compliance, it's always going to be the people on the ground. It's not going to be the technology, it's not going to be any of those things. It's going to be the boots on the ground, the teachers, the staff, the mental health training, the threat assessment, the people that are involved, following up everything, because it's see something, say something, but it's always do something. Is that here, we will always do something, and that's the piece that I want to make sure everybody knows, because I know with Chief Ruiz, with Superintendent Sarasota Board's commitment to school safety is that that, that has to be, that's what the preventative is. Because if you really get into nuts and bolts, it's 93% of all school shootings is the student brought the gun in. It's not from the outside. The two outliers is Givaldi and Sandy Hook. So, we really get into the facts of it. So, that's why it's always going to be the people component, our staff being trained. So, with that, I know we have to move forward. Thank you for a great presentation. Mr. Overbay, Tennessee Volunteer Fan, congratulations over your win on the Gators. Any win over the Gators is a great day.
[laughing]
Did you turn my mic off? Somebody's turning my mic off. But anyway, but anyway, no, thank you very much, guy. I really appreciate it. And we'll see you guys tonight or later this afternoon at the board meeting. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We did not lose, FSU did not lose, because we were, because we were on a bye week. So, we couldn't lose. So, moving forward, we'll go to executive session. Mr. Dugan?
You want to go ahead and adjourn this?
We'll go ahead and adjourn.